Let's bring the 5:30 special meeting to order. Since a special meeting, we don't need a pledge of diligence. A real call, please.
Councilmember Fruin?
Here.
Councilmember Mohan?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here. So we have two items on this agenda. The first one is an action item to consider the inclusion of the Economic Development Committee to restore the code in the municipal that was removed in early 2023. Do we have a staff report?
We do, we do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So as the council knows, the city in 2022 enacted an ordinance establishing the Economic Development Committee. And in 2023, the commission, the city disbanded that by ordinance disbanded that committee. At that time, city staff took on the responsibility of the economic development within the city. And today, we have Daniel Deju here from the city's economic, he's the city's Economic Development Manager. He should be able to answer questions about how the city was implementing the economic development activities during the period that the committee had been disbanded. And the mayor has now requested that the council consider re-establishing that Economic Development Committee. And so that's what we're bringing to you today. Attached to the materials was, is an ordinance, and the ordinance is basically identical to the ordinance that created the committee back in 2002. The ordinance calls for a committee of nine members. Two would be city council members, five would be members from various industry sectors, and two would be commissioners, one from the Sustainability Commission and the other from the Technology, Information and Communications Commission. As you're considering, I just want to mention that one aspect of the proposed ordinance has to do with the location and/or the relationship of the industry committee members to the city. And one thing to consider is currently, the ordinance specifies that industry, industry sector representatives must work, what must work for an organization located within the city or be a resident of the city or both. And so with that, I hand it to the mayor, and I, and we have Daniel here to talk as well about what the city's been doing over the past year or so. Thank you.
So does Daniel have a prepared presentation, or you are here just to answer questions?
Daniel can walk you through on what Economic Development Division has been going on and working on in the last two years.
Okay, that's great.
Good evening, members of the city council. This is Daniel DeGoo, your Economic Development Manager. So yeah, following the EDC disbandment, staff has been actively meeting with local business owners, commercial real estate professionals, and other economic development stakeholders as part of its ongoing efforts to promote citywide economic development. A lot of this is involving business attraction, business retention through technical assistance, as well as working closely with the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. Additionally, as part of these ongoing efforts, staff did coordinate a small focus group discussion with local businesses in December of 2023, gathering feedback that informed and contributed to the Applied Development Economics Market Study. And this effort has also been documented in an informational memo on April 25th of 2024. And I would like to return it back to the city council for discussion and deliberation of the EDC ordinance.
Thank you. So just a little recap of the process from 2022. At the time, I went back to look at the council discussion and the motion. I think the council had two or three study sessions to contemplate the details of the committee at the time. Eventually, it was approved unanimously by all five council members, including Council Member Hongwei at the time. And then in November, there was an interview conducted for the Economic Development Committee. At the time, after the interview, Councilmember Hongwei started to dissent on the motion to approve some of the members, I guess. And then in January, somehow, the council started to have a review of the committee structure and decided to disband the Economic Development Committee. And as we have learned from the work program prioritization process, the top five, I think, or even six items is related to Economic Development Committee, the development of the city. So it is one, I think that's on the top of everyone's mind, every council member's mind right now. And but I would like to, I'll start with the question because when it, when the council approved to deactivate Economic Development Committee, the staff, the council did ask the staff to propose an alternative to continue the effort. And the City Manager's Office proposed to have an Economic Development Working Group, which will start meeting regularly to develop economic development strategies. So but based on reading the April 2023 info memo and based on what you have mentioned, it seems activities that has been conducted, that conducted since then is similar to whatever the city Economic Development Manager had been doing before the commitment to form a working group. So could you clarify a little what's different in the past two years in terms of the working group?
Different as far as compared to the working group?
Yeah. And has the city managers, has your office conducted anything that's, I think the Economic Development Manager has been regularly meeting with businesses, provide service, and those are the regular activities of an Economic Development Manager. But the commitment from the City Manager's Office, maybe this is a question for the City Manager, is to form a working group in place of the committee. And then I think the, the end of the April info memo also mentioned the like retail revitalization strategies and so on. So I would like to know any, it seems there has been only one meeting, one focus group conducted since then.
So I guess I'll take a different step at the questions that you raised, Mayor Chow. So when we look at working meetings, we don't have a regular cadence of these working meetings. Basically, I'm taking Daniel's lead in terms of which meeting should take place and when and with whom. For instance, I know that he has regular cadence with the chamber. He also has regular meetings with Apple. He also has regular meetings with some of the startups. So in the world of economic development, we're also, we're always looking to attract or retain. So when we're talking about working meetings, it could be with different people and different functions. It's different than a scheduled commission meeting that happened at the same time with the same people. I don't know if that answers your question.
But my understanding of a work group is a group that you have identified, list of members that at least attends regularly to, to, to consider together a strategy for the city, not only for the individual business.
That will be Daniel and I and Tina sometimes.
So the, so the work group is only the City Manager and Deputy City Manager and the Economic Development Manager?
That's the consistent members.
And not including any?
That's the consistent members of the group. So as the, as the need morphs, we will invite other businesses. I guess I, are you asking if we have been meeting? Yes, we have.
Okay, that's different from my understanding of how a work group works, but maybe it's just my misunderstanding of the intent.
Of course.
Thank you. So now we can each ask a question for five minutes, I guess, yeah. May, do we want to go by order? Okay, maybe I'll do the council this time. So Councilmember Wong, Councilmember Mohan, and, and Councilmember Fruin and Vice Mayor. Do you have questions?
I'm just curious as to what kind of businesses, when you meet with all businesses, you mean, right? Is it the individual company? Are they smaller businesses? Are they only the chambers, business members? You know, are they outside? Like, like, I mean, how do we select who we go talk to?
Yeah, thank you for that question, council member. It really is an compilation of all businesses in Cupertino, as all the businesses in Cupertino have various needs for the city. So it's interfacing with all of the different types. So startups, local businesses, businesses that are looking to establish into the city, expand, it all kind of varies.
Is it like 10 or 12, is it like 50, is it 100 meetings that you've had?
It's a lot of meetings, a lot. Daily, multiple types of businesses. Some of the businesses, there's multiple interactions that go ongoing because of their specific needs. So it's, it's a constant kind of experience in the space of economic development.
Give me an example of like, you know, one of those meetings, what it's like, so?
So it could be, for example, related to permitting. There may be challenges that they may be facing, not really on the city side, but just in general, with their capacity as a smaller business that lacks those infrastructures. So meeting with them and assisting them through that process, connecting them with various staff members in CDD, for example, that can help them through the process. That's one example.
Sure, Mayor, if I may.
I'll use my time.
Can you elaborate on two incidents, at least? I know one is early on, you had a conversation with Amazon and how we determine their visibility because before you told me, we didn't realize that we have an Amazon presence in Cupertino. And second incident is more recent, your interaction with Alpha X.
Yeah, happy to do that. Thank you, City Manager. So with Amazon, I did have a relationship with them in my prior job at a different city. They do have a presence here in Cupertino, not that far away from our city hall. And so it's just re-establishing those relationships, having conversations, and bringing them with some visibility to what we're doing here in the city and economic development and establishing those relationships. So that definitely happened early on in my start here at the, the city. An example with Alpha X, this is an organization that has relocated from the city of San Jose into Cupertino. They purchased an office building. They do have a couple of development projects, and they're very eager to continue to, to provide, you know, services to the community. And so connecting them to community development and having them have a better understanding of what is existing here in the city for them and just in general, with their business needs, that's something I've been doing as well.
All right, I'll preserve my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mohan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Daniel. A question about the economic business activities that the working group has been involved in. In your staff report, you talk about a business outreach program, an e-newsletter, and a searchable, online searchable business map. So who, who does this go to?
So it goes to our subscribers. We have about 9,000 subscribers to the Business Connect. It goes to businesses that have an email address with us, active business licenses. We have a database for that. So does that answer your question specifically? And then this, the Business Outreach Program, that's called CBOP, actually Cupertino Business Outreach Program, and that's our way of engaging with businesses, getting them introduced to the city, coordinating with them if they want to have a ribbon-cutting event, for example, and understanding and meeting their management and figuring out what their needs are and trying to support those needs with resources and different partners that are here in the city to help.
Okay, so you send out an email to all the business, the 9,000 subscribers?
Yes, they receive emails. So for example, shameless plug here, but we do have this Thursday, the Cupertino Business Women's Luncheon. And so businesses that are subscribed to our, our newsletter will receive invitations to that, and it's a free event. They can come, it's going to be here at the Community Hall. So as council members, if you are interested in attending, please do. It's going to be at 11:30. But stuff like that is happening as far as outreach through our platform.
And last question, is the e-newspaper on the city's website?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. And my understanding is Business Connect pre-exist, it has been in the city for many years, and the Businesswoman Networking Luncheon has been in the city also since, ever since, but even before I got on the council in 2019. Those, those are not new from the working group. That's where I want to distinguish. Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Fruin?
About how many hours of staff time do you anticipate committing to run this committee?
The EDC, based on estimates, it looks like it would take about 160 hours annually.
Okay, that's a, that's a minimum?
Yeah, I would say minimum for four quarterly meetings is the estimation. And that would include not just economic development, but also the Clerk's Office, City Manager's Office. So yeah, and that's outlined in the staff report as well.
Yeah. And then would you be the one staffing the meeting primarily?
Yes.
Okay. What challenges do you think having a fully Brown Acted Committee for Economic Development presents as compared to, say, the work that your working group currently does?
I will take that question, Councilmember Fruin. I don't know if this is a challenge, but I can definitely see some rubbing as we are working closely with the small business, understanding their daily needs. Not to say that the Brown Act body does not know that the needs of the community, it may be a bit removed from understanding exactly what the business need. So I, and then I think where you're alluding to is timing, right? So if Daniel only has 40 hours, maybe sometimes 60 hours a week with the city. So if we're deviating up his time to devote to the commission work, staffing, preparing agenda, some of the needs around a small business or the larger business may be overlooked. So that could be potentially a challenge.
And I'm also presuming that, that this would be governed by our existing conflict of interest disclosures and so forth.
That's correct.
So it would be a Form 700 that everyone would have to be filing. I mean, that also provokes another question here. If we have folks who are representing particular sections of the business community, and they might be conflicted out on the very thing that we want their expertise for, that seems like a problem to me.
Yes.
What would you say a sort of typical agenda might look like for one of their meetings?
If I were to channel Daniel, the first meeting that I would like to put on the agenda if I were the division manager is to understand where is the city going with economic development. So in a world of economic development, you heard me saying many times, you can either attract or retain. And we've been focusing kind of on both, which is why you're not seeing a visible dent on the progress. So I would like the commission or council to give a clear direction, are we here to attract or retain?
All right, I'll reserve the rest of my time. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Moore?
Okay, thank you. So I'm, I'm looking at the Business Connect e-newsletter site, and I'm seeing in 2016, there were five, five emails, a newsletters. 2017, there were five, five in 2018, four in 2019, three in 2020, five in 2022, and then only two in 2023 and one in 2024. So I would have expected with the not having the Economic Development Committee that there would have been an increase in these newsletters, but I'm seeing a decrease. And so you mentioned another way that you're doing outreach. Could you repeat that? I think that was CBOP.
That's, yes, so CBOP is one of it, the Cupertino Business Outreach Program. When you're looking at the newsletter, so that is a newsletter that goes out, but, but there's also been an increased amount of distribution through the platform, which we use as GovDelivery, and that's the distribution list that will go out to Business Connect, for example. So that has increased as we have more events. We've had a lot of events. Technical assistance is really what it is in the networking events in the last year. And so there's high-volume outreach through that database, if that makes sense, to that group of Business Connect.
Okay. So I do think in terms of, of the website and the things that the city's offering in terms of if we're going to be doing something for tourism next year, you have the Super Bowl and the World Cup coming to the area, and there's, someone's made a prediction that, that all the, all the lodging within 100 miles is going to be filled up from the World Cup. So that's, that's something that we would want to be prepared for so that we have information available to visitors, to our community. For the agenda items, the potential ones, I've been looking at the proposed list for the city work program because we had a number of items on economic development, as has been mentioned already, one of them being to, to restore the Economic Development Committee. But there's, there are a few things in here that I think members of the business community could weigh in on, and some of it being what, what have the issues been with regards to the, the getting business licenses, getting permits and for ADA requirements, meeting those. If there's, I know that the chamber did a, a presentation on that a couple of years ago, which seemed pretty well-attended, and it was offering some really important support for businesses who were being looked at for whether or not they had the ADA compliance. And I'm curious about, like, some of the questions that the city council wanted to see explored were options to support small businesses, fill empty storefronts, and encourage entry of new forms of retail to promote revitalization. I would like to hear from, like, the Economic Development Committee if there's something that, that they have for, for ideas with that. What do you think you could foresee their role in that to be? What, what contributions do you think they can make?
Yeah, so in the ordinance that's presented to the council tonight, it does have that advisory role to the city council. So those are all types of options that can definitely be under the purview of the commission or committee.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you. I, I think a lot of, a lot of the work that the current Economic Development Manager is doing is important, and that has been done by prior Economic Development Manager too, who was on a part-time basis. And, and then the publication to connect with businesses, one, one meeting to serve business to find out their needs, these are all purposes of having a manager. But having a committee is, the purpose is, we have a community that has a lot of people who have founded companies, multiple companies, who have, are the executive level leaders in a lot of the industries. And we have always talked about, oh, we need to diversify our revenue base, but we never really has a policy on how to implement that. So what I see is not only small and retail business, but also mid-sized business because Cupertino used to have, to incentivize people to move headquarters to Cupertino, for example. And I see that other cities are talking about how to create an ecosystem for a specific industry, for example biotech, because they require manufacturing space and that actually generate a lot of sales revenue. So what other industry sectors are, are there, what kind of ecosystem they need, we don't know. I don't think the manager would know, but maybe a lot of our community members might, might have expertise on those. And if we can have a regular meeting, even the ones who are not on the commission, they can comment and then brainstorm together, how do we have a good policy that we can help? So this is what I see as the role of the Economic Development Committee, which I think is not filled by the current Economic Development Manager. So I'd like to make the motion for the, oh, public comment, sorry. Yeah. Public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor, I have three requests to speak. Jean Bedore, Jennifer Griffin, and San Ar. Welcome, Jean.
Do you, can you, okay, good. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedore, and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. I am here to express my opposition to resuscitating the Economic Development Committee. It was poorly conceived and implemented when it was created at the end of 2022 and then mercifully disbanded in 2023. Yesterday, I sent an email to council explaining why this committee per se is unnecessary and a waste of public and staff resources. While we can agree that business revitalization and economic development are a high priority for the city, quarterly Brown Act committees are doomed to be ineffective. The city has structural problems with less than 3% available commercial and office space. There's no room in the city to attract small to medium businesses of the caliber that we need to diversify our economy. The city is not a developer, so it can't resolve the space issues. At this point, until the rise is built out, the emphasis should be on retaining current businesses and assisting them in staying in the city. Plus, AI used to be headquartered in Cupertino. It's now relocated to Santa Clara, which has more available space. Splunk used to be in Cupertino. It's now located in Santana Row, citing the amenities that are available to it there, to them there. A slice of New York, a pizza place in Sunnyvale, which has been in business for 14 years, is closing despite good business. Why? They can't hire enough people. Their current employees struggle with housing despite their relatively good pay. They are couch surfing, living out of cars, or dealing with long commutes. It's not sustainable. A committee cannot address these issues, so why waste scarce city resources? There are other ways to address economic development, as our Economic Development Manager has discussed. They're far more flexible and effective than a committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I'm glad we're having this meeting. I am firmly convinced we need to have the Economic Development Committee reinstated. This city, I'm glad that there's an Economic Development Manager. I'm glad that we have city staff actively involved in this. I'm very, very concerned when we read articles that Valley Fair is able to sign new businesses in that mall, which is from 1955. I went to a horse show there, believe me, 1962, unbelievable. But when I first moved to Cupertino and when my grandmother lived here, my grandmother lived here from 1950 to 1981, this is where we came to shop. The, the retail right now is completely under threat. We have four viable retail sites on Stevens Creek Boulevard, front and center Staples, Panera, which is still in business. We have the falafel shop down the street, and then I believe there's another site. All they want to do is put housing on them. It, and I was told that the four SB330s in town are probably not financially viable. This was by a good source a couple of weeks ago. Why are we sacrificing our retail in Cupertino? As residents of Cupertino, we are just as good as people in other cities. We need, there, there's something going on with the housing market in terms of Cupertino has a big sign on its back that says, you can't open retail here, only housing is welcome. Well, that is wrong. And I am around a lot of areas. I, Monterey, Capitola. I, Monterey, Capitola, Santa Cruz, Scotts Valley, I have relatives there. My sister-in-law was a small business owner in Santa Cruz. My cousin has a business. And Scotts Valley right now, as a model, is active. They have a brand-new Target. They have a beautiful hotel. They are redoing the Sky Park area. My, my nephew worked at Amazon Labs in Cupertino, and he developed one of the Kindles. So we have good people, good prospects. And I think the committee is very, very important because they are key to bringing in and retaining retail. I don't want Cupertino to become a bedroom community. Apple chose to stay here, Hewlett-Packard was here. We are high-tech, we just need to say there's more to Cupertino than just housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And next, we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. That is San Ar. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I would like to point out that I think we are conflating operational activities with quantified metrics and outcomes, and we're also conflating operational and tactical items with strategic items. I think hosting panels and networking events is basically busy work with outcomes that we are not measuring. So we need to reopen the dais for discussion. I hope council members will ask staff, what metrics do they use to measure success? And what are some results they've seen? Specifically, have we seen a reduction in permit time? And what did they do that cost the reduction in permit time? Have we seen new businesses that did open in Cupertino? And what specific activity did EDM do to accomplish that? Have we seen an increase in sales tax? And what was done to accomplish that? Have we seen a fast turnaround in leasing retail stores? And how is the city responsible in partnering with the operator for the shopping center for that? So as far as I can tell, I see a lot of busy work. It's unclear to me who's paying for these. It is either a way to promote the Chamber, so that the Chamber gets visibility, like this Thursday event, which the city is putting a front signage for, and you click on it, it takes you to the Chamber's page, or it is just blowing city money on doing nothing. I'd also like council members to ask the staff member, if you needed to make a policy document, would you hire a consultant to do that, or would staff do that? Because if you're gonna be, I, I do agree with Ms. Bedore that staff time is scarce and precious and expensive. And so if the answer is, we're gonna have to hire a consultant to write policy documents, then maybe we should terminate this department. Let's just hire a contractor, and we can get the contractor to do what the city needs to do. So I, I believe that staff resources are expensive, and, and we need to be careful about, are we getting output for these roles? And so I encourage you to really dig deep on metrics and outcomes. I'd also say that concerns about a Brown Act committee are easily worked around using subcommittees or two committee members to be able to go off and aggressively pursue and come back with a set of strategic goals. What we actually need are staff members that are able to work to achieve outcomes rather than throw up obstacles to making progress. And so let's try and understand, is that feasible? Or do we need to terminate this department and use a contractor who will do what we need to do? Because we're not getting results right now. The sprouts sat empty forever. What could the city have done to lease sprouts? And, and I do want-
Thank you, San. That is your time. Mayor, there are no additional requests to speak for this item.
Thank you. Me, I have a motion to start. Vice Mayor?
Okay, so I move the recommended action that we conduct the first reading of ordinance number 25-2269, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending City Code Title II, Chapter 2.96, Economic Development Committee, and to find that the proposed actions are exempt from sequoia.
Second. One second.
Okay. It's already 6:05, so I think let's have one minute comment each, if you would like to comment on the item. I see. Councilmember Mohan.
Did you say one minute?
Yeah. Because we have a second item.
Okay, let me go as fast as I can then. So when we disbanded the Economic Development Committee in January of 2023, there were two reasons why we did so, and I'm going to be really brief on why, what these reasons were. One of them was the timing, the meeting, which was a meeting after the 2022 election and before the new council members were being seated. The second, and that's what I will focus on, was the lack of clarity about the, the practical role of the Economic Development Committee. For me, that concern is still very much there. In the CWP, the City Work Program, all of us have listed business revitalization as our priority, so there's no disagreement there. The disagreement, in my mind, is in the implementation of the business revitalization plan. We can all see what's happening, not just in our city, but everywhere else. Housing shortages, decline of retail, empty storefronts, financing issues, and the requirements of the housing element that we all must comply with. These are complex issues. I'm running out of time, Mayor. Can I get another minute?
I think other council members can yield their time to you.
Thank you.
So anyone would like to hear-
I'll yield a minute to go for it.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll return your favor some-
Someday, someday, it's good.
So these are, as I mentioned, these are complex issues, and we need experts to present a concrete plan of action and tell us where the gaps are and what needs to be done. It is hard to see how committee members, no doubt, all with good intentions, but appointed for four years, which is a long time, can accomplish anything that is cohesive or feasible or solution-based. Our neighboring cities, Saratoga and Sunnyvale, don't have committees. The work of business revitalization is done by staff. Mountain View just concluded a study, which was completed by an outside firm using data analysis. They pointed out specific steps to revitalize the city and create solutions. It took just a few months. The staff report that we have seen today outlines the steps taken by the Economic Development Staff, and it's a considerable body of accomplishment. I think we should follow up and expand those efforts. I will not be approving the revival of this committee.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Fruan.
So I'm, I'm slightly concerned that we are at risk of falling prey to politicians' logic, that is, something must be done, this is something, therefore, we must do it. I don't really share that view. I share the views that Councilmember Mohan just expressed. And in looking at the composition of the committee, I'm not really sure what it would be able to accomplish. In particular, if we have a great deal of focus on wanting to preserve retail and expand retail, well, there's only one retail person who is on the committee. And again, going back to conflict of interest requirements, that person may well be recused and wouldn't be able to offer their expertise. And that, to me, seems like a real problem. That doesn't mean that public engagement isn't a worthy goal. It is. I just don't think that this is the way that we can achieve it for this purpose, and so I will not be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
Okay, so the original Economic Development Committee had members of the Chamber of Commerce on it, and four members of staff, and I believe a planning commissioner and a city council member. As far as I could research, it was formed in 1996, and there were some kind of incomplete meeting minutes that were available in the records. So I followed it through from 96 to around, oh, 2019, when I questioned whether or not this committee, the prior committee, was actually a, an ad hoc committee, or was it, should it be a standing committee? And so we did codify it at that point, and it took a number of years to do so in order to diversify the business representatives that we had on that, that particular committee. If you look at San Jose's Economic Development Committee work program for the year-
Is it tight?
Okay. They, they have a number of items which we could also be adopting, so there's, there's plenty of work for them to do, and I do support this committee.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I think from the past record, we have know there was an Economic Development Committee that was not Brown acted, and it hasn't developed any good policy for many years. And we have tried to allow the city manager's office to have the working group in the past two years. We tried that, and it hasn't really brought up any good policy that we can implement, although it has implemented what we have done before, connecting with business community. So I think it's time we try a new method that we haven't done before. And also, even though we have multiple items on the work program, as I look at that, it's all going to be done by the city manager's office. And as we have seen in the past, put something on the work program and leaving it to the staff at the end of the year often, it may or may not achieve that purpose that we had intended to. So I'm hoping that with the committee, there will be more frequent checking when, and more brains in, to, to help us with the process. So that, I would like to try this new process with the committee. So let's vote then. Okay.
Oh, I apologize, Mayor. There is an issue with the screen, so I would like to take a roll call vote, if you are amenable.
Okay.
Councilmember Fruan?
No.
Councilmember Mohan?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Excuse me, clerk, I, did we get a second on the motion?
No.
Yes. Councilmember Wong.
I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm, let's see, Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries with Fruan and Mohan voting no.
Okay, now we are on to the second item, and the study session to consider reestablishing the city's Legislative Review Committee. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Let's see. Astrid Robles is also a manager and analyst, senior managing analyst with the city, and unfortunately, she's not well tonight, but we do have a staff report. So this is a motion to reestablish the Legislative Action Committee. It's a, a study session, and in 2018, the city established a somewhat informal Legislative Action Committee, and that Legislative Action Committee became known as the Legislative Review, Legislative Review Committee. The mayor has asked that the city council reconsider, consider reestablishing the Legislative Review Committee and requested this study session. That Legislative Review Committee was also disbanded in 2023. I would, so in addition to Astrid Robles, who focuses on legislative issues for the city, the city also employs a lobbyist who works with Astrid and has also worked with the legislative, the previous Legislative Review Committee. And I want to, I would like to note that, that in my investigation of reestablishing the Legislative Review Committee, I have heard from staff that the, the prior structure of the Legislative Review Committee was difficult for staff to keep up with. It seemed to generate large amounts of work, and, and so there seems to be a real desire to have a more formalized structure if a Legislative Review Committee is created. And I think that should be something that you consider in the study session as soon as you begin that. And with that, I'll hand it over to the mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have about less than 30 minutes for the remaining of this special meeting. Let's have three minutes question from council members, then open to public comment. Any question from council members? Oh, Vice Mayor?
Okay, thank you. So I had served on the previous Legislative Review Committee for two years, and I was wondering if it's possible, I was looking at the resolution and that they used to abolish it, and the interpretation of the municipal code, and I was wondering if it's possible that the LRC could be a subcommittee for the 2025 legislative session, which ends October 12th, and with the purpose to then make recommendations to the council regarding support or opposition of pending legislation per the legislative platform, which was in place in 2022, and then have those recommendations put on as a consent item to the city council. So previously, to my recollection, we would make recommendations to the, I believe it was to the city mayor, who would work with staff to, and the, and the lobbyists, to provide letters to the legisla, to the legislature. And so now, I, I don't know if this corrects that issue, but we would send the recommendations as a, for, as a consent item, and then if there are potential changes to the legislative platform, because it was 2022, that we would also make those recommendations for the council to deliberate on. And, and then, I don't know if it would be the mayor at that point who would send the letters out still, but it would go to, our recommendations would go to council, and then either the mayor or the council as a whole body would, would provide that. Is that, is that something that would address the issues in the resolution when they abolished it?
I, I believe you're referring to the delegation of authority to the subcommittee from the city council. And that is an issue that I would like the council to ask the city attorney to look more deeply into, but I do believe that if the recommendations are coming back to the full council, even if on consent, they can be pulled from consent, and if the council is approving them, then I think that would resolve the issue.
Okay, thank you. And, and with that, I would like you, if the council agreed, to look into that issue, because I was going over all of the committees, and so the, there are a number which have less than a quorum, as they reference in that, in the municipal code. The Audit Committee, two council members and three members of the public. We had our Fourth of July Fireworks Subcommittee, two council members. The ERC had a council member and a planning commissioner. The City Hall Subcommittee, two council members. We had a Grant Policy Subcommittee, two council members, and two Parks and Rec Commissioners. And the Economic Development Committee had two council members on it, and, and again, it'll have two. So it, it seems as though those, those committees, because they were advisory to the council, didn't have that issue of, of the, that, that's being alleged that the LRC had. So the full, since I have a little bit of time, the city council, the full municipal code that was referenced is that for council power, the city council retains the full power to accept, reject, amend, or otherwise guide and direct staff actions, decisions, recommendations, workloads, and schedules, department priorities, and the conduct of city business through the office of the city manager. This power cannot be delegated to individual council members, nor to committees composed of council members consisting of less than a quorum of the city council. So I would like to know if there is an issue with the- So I would like to know if there is an issue with the last sentence, considering how many committees we have with just two, and if, how, how these other committees have been able to be established the way they were, or, or, you know, is there a problem that needs to be fixed? Thank you.
To address the question, I don't think that there's a problem that needs to be fixed with those other committees. I would like, actually, to have the time to dive more deeply into that specific question, but I think the issue with respect to the Legislative Review Committee was that the committee itself was making decisions on behalf of the full commission and then sending those letters off to the legislature, and that kind of policy decision-making, I think, likely does fall within the purview of the full council, and cannot really be delegated to only a member, to members, less than a majority of the council to make that kind of a decision.
Okay, so a part of what we had was the framework of the legislative platform, which we couldn't, we had to stay in our lane, and so the recommendations were, like, there were things that we couldn't make a recommendation on at all, because they weren't part of the rules we had to follow. So, yeah, I would like to see that looked into.
I, I think my question would fall along the same line, so I'll just use my time. I think you can answer together. So I'm sharing my screen now. I think to allow the way that, to operate like it was operated in two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty-two. But first of all, Legislative Action Committee or Review Committee was established long before two thousand nineteen. We have just been more active, because there has been onslaught of state laws that affect, impacting the city, city municipal code, and overriding our code. And I think the council just needs to provide clear direction when forming the Legislative Review Committee, to take, to allow them to take position on bills to support or oppose based on legislative platform on issues the platform supports or opposes, and make a recommendation to the council on bills based on the legislative platform on issues to monitor or issues not covered, sorry about typo, by the legislative platform, but will impact Cupertino. And then make a recommendation to the council on any revision to the legislative platform as needed, and make recommendations to the mayor to agendize any public education on legislative process or legislative updates, because at the time, we also organized the public session to educate the public about legislative, the, the whole process, the very complicated process. I think with this council direction, it's clear that Legislative Review Committee can take a support or oppose position with this clear council direction and make a recommendation where it's not clear. So would that suffice?
I understand the position, and I haven't done the research into that. That's what I would like you to direct me to do that research.
Okay.
It seems like a reasonable mechanism, but nonetheless, I would like to take time to look into that.
And I have, do I have a little more time? So another issue was, is with the contract. I think our earlier contract with the consultant was a consultant that is reporting to the city council, and even is allowed to have individual meetings with city council to provide us information. But that scope of work has been modified to report only to the city manager. As a result, there has been very little visibility or accessibility for council members to the consultant and the resources that they can provide. And also very little, I think one benefit of the LRC is the member of the public who are interested in any bill were able to ask questions, and the knowledgeable consultant was able to answer them. So that was very helpful. And without LRC, we didn't have that process, and we don't want to bring all these questions to the council agenda either. So, so that has been a good way to be, to make more efficient use of council meeting time. Yeah, thank you. So any other questions? If no other question, we'll go to the public comment on council member Fruen.
So to the city attorney, you're anticipating doing additional research and bringing back recommendations to us? Is that the idea?
Since this is a study session, yeah, that's my expectation, that that would be the city attorney's work, and then as we move through this agenda item, there may be other items that we'll be taking away and bringing back.
Okay. And then to the city manager, would we anticipate continuing to work with consult as, as the lobbyist?
That's the assumption.
Okay.
So if we have, I, I can yield my time to call Vice Mayor Moore if you have more questions.
Just real quick with the, thank you, mayor, for, for bringing up the issue about the modified scope of work. So the, the city council no longer got to receive the, the updates that we were, that we were getting. So the, I submitted the scope of work, the original and modified, for this, this item in the written communications, and the contract appears to be butting up against the two hundred thousand dollar mark around the end of October, so I'm not sure how that can be amended further after that. So that, that is a question to, to staff. And that's it, thank you.
Any other questions? So then let's go to the public comment.
Yes, mayor, I have, we have two members of the public requesting to speak, Jennifer Griffin and San Ar. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, city council. I will tell you that I was appalled at the point that the LRC was disbanded. I felt it was an insult to a lot of the public and to me, myself. I took it as a complete affront. I spent a great deal of my time. I have a lot of responsibilities as a retired person, because we had four seniors we have to take care of, and I was completely blown away by four hundred bills that were passed, I'm gonna throw it out there, since Senator Weiner, twenty nineteen came in, wasn't just him, that have completely assert local authority. I have been coming to these meetings since two thousand and five, and I spent five years in the county going to county meetings as we were attempting to get annexed. I got more bang for my buck out of the LRC than a lot of other things I have done in my life. I felt I was back at college, learning important things. Because of the LRC, I am a very, very active citizen. I belong to three groups that are fighting the loss of local control. They are nationwide and growing. I'm actively watching what's happening in Oregon, because this has affected relatives of mine up there in three cities. My niece recently bought a home, as was her choice, and she's having a baby, and she bought a single-family home. That is her choice. As far as I'm concerned, the LRC is well worth its money. Right now, there are two bills. Senator Weiner has one that is going to fight CEQA, and one that, that is SB six oh seven, and then one that is trying to rezone everything down Stevens Creek Boulevard for high-density housing within one-half mile. That's SB seventy-nine. The public has the right to know about these things. You know, I am a taxpayer. For whatever reason, I bought my house myself, when nobody wanted anything in my neighborhood because it was a war zone. People had been murdered there. That's my choice. I was willing to sacrifice living in a lovely, you know, condo maybe I couldn't afford, but I, I, as a member of the public, want to know these things. Also, we have a new Senator Becker, and we have a brand-new assemblyman, Mr. Ehrens. We haven't, I don't know either of them, okay? They're brand-new. They can come to this commission and introduce themselves and tell us what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. That is San Ar, welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I urge you to vote for this and wholeheartedly support the reenactment of the Legislative Review Committee. I believe it is critical that the city have a mechanism for you to hear from residents on state laws that affect local control and that impact the quality of life and public safety of Cupertino residents, and this will provide you a framework to be able to hear from residents and channel through this Legislative Review Committee. You have the ability to then raise this with state-elected officials and with your peers' own councils in surrounding cities, so that you may hopefully have a voice that collectively our state-elected officials can actually pay attention to. One of the challenges that we have is that local council members are at the bottom of the pyramid of power in Sacramento, and the reason for that is because collectively, they lack a single voice. And if we had multiple cities in the Bay Area and other places that had a Legislative Review Committee that was able to funnel from the bottom up feedback, especially in the areas where local control is being taken away from cities, I believe that that pyramid would actually allow for council members to rise up and have more influence on the state. I ask that you not focus on social or other political issues and limit this specifically to state issues and county issues that may have an impact to the local control that is, that is being taken away from council, and also unfunded mandates that really threaten the fiscal sustainability of the city. Let me give you a couple of real quick examples. In just the last year, we have had a number of housing-related bills that were passed. SB ten thirty-seven increases the powers of HCD to enforce compliance on cities. So it's, it's difficult enough and challenging enough to get through the housing element and certification, and I should add that I'm speaking for myself here and, and speaking only as a resident, but it is challenging enough to get certified, and, and now we have the risk of legal compliance, and would it have been good to have the city and other cities provide input on this? Perhaps if we had an LRC, it would have given you a mechanism to funnel input and to do so in a way that is not representing yourselves, because one of the challenge for council members is to be viewed as being threatening to a position taken in Sacramento. However, if you have an LRC that really channels the voice of your residents, it allows you to speak on behalf of your constituents and, and really channel this in a way that is safe for yourselves as well. I can give you several other examples. SB four fifty is streamlining housing approvals. SB ten is density zoning and allows up to ten parcels per lot in transit-rich areas, which is really challenging. We have several other things that are going on. For example, we, we had the Prop Five.
Thank you, San, that is your time. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Thank you. So Floyd, do you need a straw vote from the council on whether to move forward this leveraging LRC so you can study the issues?
It would be especially helpful to have a sense of how the council would like to see an LRC formed. It may be too soon to do that at this meeting, but I think that the city attorney and staff may have a difficult time coming back with an organizational structure that will fit within what you were thinking about, because we haven't had that interaction. We certainly can come back with a legal opinion about the delegation concept, and we potentially could come up with various options, and you could have another study session reviewing those specific options. That might be another way to move forward.
So maybe it makes sense for each of us to give one minute comment on what we would like to see in, in case it comes back, and whether, please state whether you support or not support, at least a forming of a committee. Vice Mayor Moore, do you have?
Well, my suggestion-
A comment on the process?
Okay. Well, my suggestion, and I, I actually think we can do this tonight, is that we have the LRC formed as a subcommittee for the twenty twenty-five legislative session, which ends October twelfth, to make recommendations to the council regarding support or opposition of pending legislation following the existing legislative platform, which we have available online, and it was from twenty twenty-two, and those recommendations will be ordinarily a consent item, which can be pulled, that we would advise the council of potential changes for consideration to the existing legislative platform for council to consider updating it. And then, based on the council's approval or modifications of the subcommittee legislative recommendations, the mayor will send letters of support or opposition on the various bills of interest, and so I would actually want, like that to be our motion, and staff will need to modify the current lobbyist's contract scope of work to return it to providing information also to the council in the original scope of work.
Okay, so that would be a motion. Are you also, would, does your motion also include the members, appointing members to the subcommittee?
I would appoint myself and either yourself, mayor, or, or council member Wong.
Okay, so I'll second that motion, but in terms of commit, the appointment, maybe that, we'll leave that to a friendly amendment. And let's have one minute comment from each person about the motion on the table. Councilmember Mohan.
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to make a comment, not so much on the motion before the council, but just a couple of thoughts about what this legislative committee is supposed to accomplish. In the two years that I've been on the council, I do not recall encountering a situation where there was a consequential legislative issue that came up, and we, as a city, felt we were unable to respond to in a timely manner. We have many different sources from where we get information. We have a lobbyist in Sacramento, as you have mentioned. We have representatives in Sacramento, Assemblymember Patrick Ehrens, State Senator Josh Becker, and they send out regular newsletters giving status of various legislative proposals that are being deliberated and that are in the pipeline. We are members of the Cities Association, the League of California Cities, organizations that keep us updated on legislative matters at the state level and allow us to have a seat at the table. We are, let's not forget, we are a small city and must join with other cities and other agencies if we want to see change. On our own, there's not much we can do. Frankly, there is no way that we can effect consequential change by just going with a city Legislative Review Committee and expecting it to have an effect statewide or, or even beyond, so.
Okay, thank you. So councilman, Vice Mayor Moore?
Okay. Real great example of legislation which impacts us directly, which the city had an opportunity to weigh in on, was SB four twenty-three, which impacts SB thirty-five law, which clearly impacts our city. That was Senator Scott Weiner's bill. YIMBY Action, which is connected to YIMBY law, which sued the city, supported that bill. South Bay YIMBY supported that bill, and Cupertino For All supported that bill. The city of Cupertino did not weigh in on it at all, and that was a huge, huge mess. We also missed SB eleven seventy-four, which we really needed to weigh in on, and some people in the community knew about SB eleven seventy-four and did not inform their own city council. So there, there are, I'm sure there's more out there, but we'll just start with those.
Okay, anyone else? One minute comment?
Yeah, I'll add one. So, I, we are a small city, and, and for that reason, it is important that we actually do everything we can to inform ourselves. We don't always have all the interests in place to help us with local control. Many of the institutions people have mentioned are actually working against us and working against what our residents want, and having someone that actually understands and plays a role and represents the council is important, especially in the council's priorities. It might be, you know, we might be in the minority, majority in terms of opinions, but if the majority is asking for- if the majority is asking for a certain view and trying to understand the legislative impact, we should be receiving that directly. It should not just go to the city manager, it should go to the entire council and the manager, and more importantly, to the public.
Thank you. Councilmember Fruen.
So I either watched or listened to virtually every session of the Legislative Review Committee since it was reestablished and came back into force with Townsend and Associates in, I want to say, early 2019, and I found it to be a spectacularly ineffectual body. There's any number of bills that came before it that the city took positions on, and that wound up being a galvanizing reason for the legislature to pass those bills. So I think that if there is going to be a reintroduction of this committee, that we should be a lot more strategic in our thinking about what we do with it. Vice Mayor Moore, for example, referenced, was it AB 1174? That was a bill that was introduced while there was a Legislative Review Committee, while the city was still represented by a lobbyist. So I'm not convinced that this is a mechanism that is going to get us what we want. Thank you.
I'd like to call a question.
Thank you, let me make my one-minute. So the LRC at the time also was tracking bills that other organizations are tracking from Cal Cities, from Planning Association, and other advocacy groups like YIMBY Law, but also Livable California. It's true, alone, we do not make a lot of impact, but if everyone think that way, we are never going to make an impact. But there are other cities who are taking positions individually, but then together, we have an impact. And there are advocacy groups, well-funded ones, like YIMBY Law, who are pushing hard on a lot of laws that affect us. If we don't take a position, we are being pushed aside. So it's important for us, and also this brings visibility. What we are seeing, SB 330, yes, it passed, but we were able to take a position to oppose it in 2019, and now we are seeing how bad it is preliminary project can lock in entitlement with the prelim, simple preliminary application. That's simply a pretty bad law. Unfortunately, we know who it passed, and now we can voice the concern to legislators to revise these bills. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Moore, you have?
I was wondering if, Mayor, if we could direct staff to provide the reports, given from Goncalves and Sons since January 2023, if those could be provided as an informational memo to the City Council, so that we can finally have that information ourselves.
Okay, so the motion-
I'd like to call a question.
Yeah, sorry, the motion on the table including the direction, do we, but then we need to appoint subcommittee members. Councilmember Wong, would you like to serve?
Mayor, if I may, since this is a study session, I think that the appropriate recommendation would be to ask us to come back with a resolution to be passed next time. I don't believe it's appropriate, if it's only a study session, to actually create the committee at this moment.
I think this is a temporary subcommittee for one year only. So this is not recreating LRC. Now we are, I think the Vice Mayor's motion is create a subcommittee for only this legislative year. So do we expect the study session on LRC to come back later, right?
We would need another-
Yeah, so therefore, so for the LRC, we do need another study session. The motion is forming a subcommittee.
Forming a subcommittee to come back with a mechanism to create?
No, forming a subcommittee-
To actually move forward. I think the subcommittee should be created by resolution.
I think we usually does not have a resolution to create a subcommittee.
So the subcommittee that, you're talking about a subcommittee like you had before?
Like a subcommittee for the Fourth of July.
Okay, I see, just a two-member ad hoc subcommittee, okay, understood.
For only this year.
Yes, all right, that's fine, thank you.
And the function was as directed in Vice Mayor's, I think, in her-
In her motion.
Motion, yeah.
So this would not be a Brown Act committee?
No.
Understood.
Well, it is still Brown Act committee, because it's created by the council. I think any subcommittee created by-
If an ad hoc, short-term, sort of single-purpose subcommittee of less than majority of the council, it does not have to be, does not have to comply with the Brown Act. Of course, you could comply with the Brown Act, but you do not have to.
I think this is more like a standing subcommittee, because it will have multiple meetings throughout the year, so it should be Brown acted, right?
Okay.
Yeah, let me share that, just to be clear. I think this is a motion that was made by Vice Mayor Moore. So the committee won't make any decision. It will make a recommendation to the council, and the recommendation will be put on consent, and the council will make the final decision. So this is, I think, an interim process, because we don't want to miss the time.
Understood.
Yeah, so that's legal, right? We can do that.
I think that we can move forward. I would prefer to come back with a specific resolution, but I think with this vote, we can move forward in that way.
Yeah, and then we do still want to come back with a study session on the actual LRC that has a proper structure, of course. And then I think the motion also include modifying the scope of work, so that the consultant would also report to the City Council members, not just the City Manager. And the sub, so a friendly amendment to appoint-
Vice Mayor.
Committee members would be Councilmember Wong and Vice Mayor Moore. Do you accept a friendly amendment?
I accept.
I accept.
Okay, let's vote.
And do we also have in the motion to, the direction to staff to provide the reports from Goncalves and Sons since the start of January?
Yeah, including providing report as an info memo-
Yes.
Since all the reports from Goncalves since the January 2023, right?
Please.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
I think I second that. It's, I seconded the motion, yeah.
It was Moore and Chow.
Yeah. Okay, so I, and if, if you really have like a 20-second comment, you have to make, make it now, it's already 6:48. Otherwise, we will vote.
Call for a vote, call for a vote.
Okay, then let's vote.
I'm going to see if our vote panel is working correctly, Mayor, but I believe we may have to take a roll call vote.
Okay.
It's still, a video hasn't had a chance to come over and correct it, so I will, I will take a roll call vote. Councilmember Fruen?
No.
Councilmember Mohan?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries with Fruen and Mohan voting no.
Okay, should we take a five-minute break and then come back for the regular meeting? Sorry that this is delayed, so we will come back at 6:54.